Good evening. Sorry we're late. Welcome to the continuation of the Tuesday, January 13th, 2015 Elmhurst Board of Education meeting. The board has been in closed session since 6:30 PM, clearly we started too late, to discuss student residency, negotiations, and employment of employee. We have seven board members present, none absent. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we get to start with the best part of any board meeting. This week, staff recognition. We have five shining star awards. Karen, do you want to start? Or Mr. Purno, did you want to?
No, we're just, again, appreciate people who are being recognized for really going above and beyond the call of duty. It really should have been a recognition we had a while ago, but now that we have it, it's been a great event and we're hoping it continues. So with that, five individuals who really should be recognized.
And can we call them all up? I've got the three of the names, I don't know the other two. Nancy Bensfield. I'll do three and we'll finish off with Shannon. Jen Liebahn. And Frank Dahlman. All right. So come on up in front.
We're at the center.
Of course, you're on display. This is our favorite part, so you know, you've got to be out on display, okay? Yes, absolutely, thank you, absolutely. So first Nancy, let's see, Nancy, math teacher and croquet club, crochet club advisor at Sandberg. Okay, so Nancy and Jen, oh, and Jen both together, nominated by Linda Fahrenbacher and Jeff Gale. Jen, art teacher and crochet club advisor, or should I say co, at Sandberg. Nancy and Jen have had students in their crochet club design and create coffee cup sleeves. Thank you for the demonstration, we always love to see those. They are being sold at Elijah's for $5, so we'll go support you. All proceeds support the UCCA. There are 40-plus students in the club. This is one of at least two community service projects this club is doing this year. Jen has done this fundraiser two years in a row. Last year she created mini espresso mugs and funds raised were donated to UCCA. All right. Frank Dahlman, eighth grade English teacher at Sandberg, nominated by Sally Kruger and Linda Fahrenbacher. There is a visually impaired student in Frank's class. The student is legally blind with a degenerative eye disorder. The student is learning to use a cane for guidance and braille to communicate in reading and writing. The student is self-conscious about using braille. Frank has been learning braille so that he can encourage the student to use it openly. This student is now more open and willing to share his new form of communication as his self-confidence has been greatly boosted. What great stories. Thank you so much for all that you do.
First is Sue Hand and Susan O'Leary. Sue Hand is an educational assistant at Fisher. She was nominated by Marie Gale and Jane Bailey. Sue works tirelessly at Fisher from early morning before school care through the school day and then into the evening for after-school care. Sue works each day assisting teachers and students patiently, helping in any way necessary. For years Sue has been a helpful resource to staff and parents. Her kind, friendly, and thoughtful manner is a warm and welcoming presence at work. Thank you. Okay, we'll clap at the end. And then Susan O'Leary, Reach teacher at Jackson School, nominated by Paula Berger and Sandy Laskowitz. On her own time, Susan assesses new resources and develops math or language arts activities to create the best program for her Reach students. She meets regularly with teachers to create projects that support her students. She motivates her Reach students to use higher-level thinking and how to become positive contributors to society. Thank you.
get to public comment. But we also welcome everyone to stay. But we understand that there's class tomorrow and things to do and... So next on our agenda is public comment. I don't have any blue cards up here. Is there anyone here that wants to make a public comment? Hearing none, then let's move on to superintendent's communication. Mr. Purno.
Yes, one of the major items on the agenda this evening is our enrollment projection and non-discretionary staffing. If you remember, over the last two years, the Board of Education has asked the administration to develop preliminary staffing recommendations so that we have plenty of run-up time when we adopt the budget for the coming year and also that we can be in a position to either renew contracts for teachers or unfortunately, if it's a case of riffing, we would have plenty of time to know what that riff process looks like and have that in place. So this evening, we want to talk to the board about non-discretionary staffing. Now, non-discretionary means what we are recommending in the staffing recommendations is a maintenance type of program that we would maintain the programs and the staffing that we presently have in place for the 15-16 school year. It does not include discretionary staffing. Anything on this list would be either because of staffing needs due to enrollment, staffing needs because of federal or state requirements, or compliance on a variety of programs that we have in place. And so what you have this evening is our projections as of January of this year, looking ahead to the following school year. We base this on roll-up numbers. In other words, we take each grade level, we look at what those numbers look like in the next grade level. We also take a look at a cohort survival process, and so we project either pluses or minuses in enrollment by grade level and by classes and come up with the recommendation that you have in front of you. The second part of this is after the board discussion tonight, and if the board adopts or comes to consensus on this recommendation, then the next part of the discussion we would have is, is there funding for non-discretionary that we want to look at? In other words, is the board comfortable with the budget recommendations based on this projection to then look at discretionary staffing? And as we did last year, we would talk to the board about, is there discretionary staffing funding? How much is that? And then go through a process of identifying what the priorities would be for discretionary staffing. I think it's no surprise that I think it's going to be, I will say this right now, I think it's going to be difficult for the board to come up with discretionary staffing numbers this year due to the uncertainty of what is happening with the budget at the state of Illinois level and with pension reform, with a lot of issues. I think it's going to be very tough to be comfortable with discretionary staffing, but we'll talk about that at a later date. So with that, what we'd like to do is take a look at the non-discretionary staffing recommendations that you have in front of you. And I am having trouble opening mine, so... Yeah, would you, Dave, for some reason, mine is not coming up. So as you see, the first is mainstream. These would be core and general education classes, mainstream teachers. At the elementary level, because of decreasing enrollment at the elementary level, we believe that we will need five less FTE, and FTE means full-time equivalent, five less FTE elementary teachers across the district next year. And again, due to the fifth grade class that's moving into sixth grade and the incoming projection on the kindergarten class coming in, moving all those up, we see that we may actually have an anticipated reduction because of enrollment, not because of budget, but because of enrollment of five FTEs. At the middle school, almost the opposite. The middle school has large sixth, seventh, and eighth grade coming through, and it right now appears that we would need 5.5 FTEs, both in core classes and in support classes to meet the needs of enrollment at the middle school. At the high school, the high school enrollment is actually flat. It appears overall that it's staying the same. However, if you remember last year, we were projecting a much larger freshman class that actually arrived this year. So in effect, what we had was greater anticipated, we hired greater staff and had a smaller anticipated freshman class. The other compounding factor this year is we have another small class already that we know coming into freshman year because of the eighth grade roll-up. This is one of the smaller eighth grade classes that we've had. So the net effect is that we believe that we can reduce the staffing at the high school by about three FTE and keep the current class size enrollment numbers the same as it was this year. So that is on the mainstream teacher side. On the elementary, on special education side at the elementary level, we have a recommendation for one elementary resource, special education teacher. This one we will probably at least partially enact before the end of the year. We already know that one of the resource rooms at Jefferson has a large class caseload and will probably need relief from that before the end of the year. We're evaluating that right now, but overall for next year, one FTE increase. The other big recommendation for special education is psychologists. We have had a very, very high caseload per psychologist in the district for a number of years, and it frankly has gotten to the point where we are way above any recommendation that we see for ratios of caseloads across the district. The other factor I think you've heard is that we have lost psychologists to other districts because in our district, we have split them between buildings and their caseloads are just so large that we are losing those personnel to other districts when they can go to another district, be in one building, have the same kind of duties but with a much smaller caseload. This recommendation will put us into compliance. It will still be a high caseload, but would put us more in compliance with where we should be with the psychologists. And then the last recommendation is English language learners. And on both the elementary and middle school front, as you can see, our English language learner population continues to increase across the district. In order for us to stay in compliance again, we would need to add three FTE on the elementary side and an additional FTE at the middle school level to stay in compliance with our ELL, and that would be a combination of bilingual and ELL support teachers. So again, this is non-discretionary, what we're recommending for the coming school year. No increase in educational assistance is also being recommended at this time.
Any questions? Shannon?
With the increase in psychologists, would there be one psychologist per building with the plus four? Not necessarily. The ratio that ISPO, which is the Illinois School Psychologist Association recommends is anywhere, a 1.0, anywhere range from a 500 to 700 students. So when you run that, some of our smaller elementaries would still have a part-time, but you would see that increase to a 1.0 at the middle schools and then still sharing with some of the, like maybe a larger elementary sharing with a smaller elementary. We would still match that. So it wouldn't be clean, that would be inequitable if you did a 1.0 in each building because we have such variance in enrollment at the elementary school.
Karen?
So it's typical for the psychologists to have that many caseloads, is that students?
That's a comprehensive caseload for a school psychologist, which takes into account not only perhaps servicing some individual students, but also being involved in the response to intervention, the student services process of child identification and child find for students that may require services, whether it be through special education or possibly ELL. They're a part of that process, they're a part of that data analysis. It takes into account the jobs they have outside of special education to service all of the students in the building.
Okay, so is there more requirements for the school districts and then therefore the psychologists?
That's specific to the role of a school psychologist in a comprehensive environment where they're not only servicing special education students, but they're also providing services to the larger picture with, you know, data analysis. They're very involved when they look at all of the aims, for example, all the aims webs and all of the benchmarking. They're assisting Charles in the schools with, they have like data meetings at least every six to eight weeks in the school to be pulling all, we gather all of that data. We need to make sure that we're looking at it and seeing if that's an indicator that we need to look closer at some students, and they're all involved in that.
Okay. So I know that as we approved and are implementing the data warehouse or data management to offload some of that people process systems, when will we see that impact this at all? Or what, you know, how do you balance that with the students coming in or the larger number of needs as well as students with trying to offload some of the things that are done manually, traditionally for our district, for our whole intent of working with the data warehouse and management?
They're not really involved in the data input. They're just helping more with the data analysis, but more importantly, you look at the data and say, okay, now what do we do with this in terms of helping develop ideas as a team? And for smaller groups of students, what we call more of a tier-two intervention, as well as what we might call more specifically a tier-three intervention for those neediest students. It's my understanding, and Charles Spandau could speak much more eloquently to this than the role of the data warehouse. The role of a data warehouse is to be able to take our data from all of our different systems and put it into the hands of the teachers in a more expedient manner. So you're, again, decreasing the amount of manpower, if you will, but also in a more expedient manner that then the teachers and those specific student services teams in the buildings can be using that data to make good decisions that drive instruction as well as maybe some individual support plans for students that are more complex in their needs.
Right, and so my understanding is that the psychologist is very instrumental in that, not even in the report generation, if you will, as well as the analysis. So I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, I know that we have had to work with this issue that we have, to help our employees as well as service our students. And so, you know, I'm trying to see, you know, will we ever get to the trend of we're not continuously adding the psychologist and trying to use the investment in the data warehouse and the management and looking at that people process systems to help with our issue? And I'm just trying to get a sense.
I would say this would give the psychologist more time with students and teams and teachers and less time in that working with the numbers in the paper, because it is important to look at the data and dissect the data, but the data is only useful if those teachers then can use that to change their instruction and provide better services to students.
And that's our intent, is for them to really do the job that they were hired to do, you know what I'm saying, or the specialty of what they were trained to do. Okay, thank you.
I understand this is an estimate. I'm just wondering from a historical perspective, and this is January, how close have we typically been on our estimates? Have we, is this a conservative estimate or would it be thought in the past that we have needed more or less?
I believe, and Chris can correct me, I think we've been pretty close the past two years. I think, you know, fluctuating one or two staff members, I think we've been fairly close on our recommendation. And the other thing that we will do, based on, you know, if there's no changes from the board this evening, then we will actually go back and meet with principals individually and talk about their individual building staffing, because we haven't done that yet. We have done this on a kind of district-wide global scale. The next step we want to do is confirm our numbers with the building principals to say, you know, I see that you have a smaller fifth grade, it looks like you're going to have to reduce by one fifth grade teacher, is that what you're seeing too, based on our numbers in our rubric, and then confirm that. And that will be the adjustment we would make later on if that's the case. But in the past two years, I don't even think we've done that. I think our numbers have been pretty close. But again, I want to have, Jim and I will sit down with each individual principal, have that conversation. The other thing that that does is if we have a reduction in staff in one particular building, we also have to talk about where we're going to place them if they're not in that building, where is a position? And so that's part of this process too. And if you look at the elementary, for example, we have potentially five less positions. We think by attrition because of retirement and other attrition factors, we will be able to absorb those teachers, but we won't specifically know that until we go through with each individual building and principal and do that staffing process.
And I think in the enrollment projecting, the hardest, the hardest grade level for us is the kindergarten. And we used the outside consultants' numbers and projections for kindergarten, but I would say the kindergarten numbers are probably least reliable from that standpoint, but we tried to have a little bit of a cushion in the elementary level so that we could account for that after, you know, kindergarten registration starts in February. So we'll have a better idea about kindergarten before the school year starts in June or so, we'll have a better idea about kindergarten.
I have a question about the first paragraph, the elementary school teacher. You say we're projecting a decrease in need for 10, but you're proposing holding five back and recommending the decrease of five. Now, the five that you're holding back, what is the timeline there? Tell me about the procedure that you would go through there.
Go ahead, Jim.
The timeline there is, we have several sections that currently, and this is early, it's January, but as we've done a complete enrollment analysis, taken a look at actual current numbers in those class sections, looking at the enrollment projections, we have several sections that are tight or we think may end up eventually going into being above the target desired for those class sections. And so the ones that were right at that number, we've included. The others we've put into, you'll call it a contingency fund, if you will, or contingency staff allocation in case we need them, but we would rather budget for it that way and not spend it than request it and not need it and end up in an overstaffed position. So that's why we ended up with the overall number and then we've cut it back and plugged those other teachers potentially into a contingency. So it's just, it's way early in the game or in the process to, we're trying to be as conservative and yet as accurate as possible in the prediction based on past practice and also taking a look at the enrollment history.
Okay, thank you.
The elementary is really volatile that way too, because you can, because of the number, you may only have two or three sections at a grade level. If you're staffing them all at 26 and then between now and the end of the year, you get a 27th, 28th, then you're over and you're staffing for a fourth teacher the following year. So that's why that one's much more volatile than some of the other sections. So that's the reason to have the contingency. Right now, we could be reduced by more than five, but right now, our recommendation is five.
Chris?
Yeah, and I think you should keep in mind what the tool is, and you're exactly right, we're really early. The tool was set out to give us a very quick look, and we asked them to do this early for us, because it's, are we, do we need to riff or not? That was the question tonight. I mean, as we get through, you know, and this goes into the budget and we look at what's, you know, the implications of that, because we backed that up off the riff deadline. So it doesn't have to be exact, it just has to be directionally correct for that decision. And then the other reason I think we wanted it early too is we thought there was a benefit to the extent that we were adding staff, to have that consensus built early so we can go out and attract, you know, the best and the brightest as early as possible. So again, the prediction itself, whether it's one or two here or there, is not as relevant, it's kind of the direction that we're going, and then a general consensus from us to them that says, hey, yeah, let's go out and grab the best we can find now. So, yeah, just that.
And Chris, to your point, that was my second question, is that, is this, my understanding is that the most competitive school districts are starting to make offers in January, and does this give us the flexibility we need to be able to attract the very best people that we can?
I think to answer that, school districts who know that their enrollment is going up and that they have retirements, that they're counting on not having, that they're counting on having to fill, they're out there recruiting right now and trying to hire. School districts who are in a position where the enrollment is not necessarily rising or we do not have, we have slated 15 teachers who will retire, those are known quantities this year. But that also doesn't mean that just because we have positions that open, that we're going to be able to slot teachers that we currently have into those positions because of endorsement or certifications, licensing issues. And so our goal is to try to be as accurate as possible, as early as possible, so if we do find ourselves in a position to riff, that we can do so very minimally and very specifically so that we don't end up with a blanket riff for all of our folks who are, you know, not currently tenured or in continued contractual service. The, with the advent of the push-up of the riff date, notification dates for certified staff that changed as a result of SB 7, what we also find ourselves looking at is a real possibility of pushing back the timeline for hiring, because once those notifications go out, that's when positions can be posted. And if those positions need to be posted, we now actually, unless we can count on specific positions being available for people who we would not fill those positions with internally, it's really hard to recruit this early on. So the recruitment of, as Chris says, you know, the best and the brightest, districts that are out there in January right now are in a position to be out there in January right now. We're not in that kind of a position. So it's actually becoming more and more rare that districts are able to recruit and hire because they just don't have the knowledge base yet to know exactly what's happening unless they are, you know, they're seeing that rise in enrollment as it's coming through. So I think it's difficult to really accurately predict. I think this puts us, from a consensus standpoint, as we've looked at all of the numbers, in a very good position to be very intelligent and thoughtful about the process as we move forward so that we are prepared, you know, come the end of March to have a better eye on what we can do moving forward. So I hope that helps a little bit.
I think there's a couple of exceptions to that. I think if you look at the psychologists right now, if we were to come to consensus tonight and the board tells us to move forward as psychologists, that's a specialized position that we could comfortably post, because that would get us ahead of that, and we know we're going to hire four psychologists. There's some other positions, probably at the high school, middle school level, based on certification, that may be tough to find, and we know we have a retirement, we would probably go out we would probably go out and post that, based on this staffing, in January again, because we know it's a position we have to fill, we know there's a retirement, we know there's an opening, and we want to be aggressive on a, you know, a math teacher, or a science teacher with certain certification skills that we're looking for.
Yeah, we just want to communicate that, you know, clearly we want to be prudent, but in those that, that we know we need to hire, you know, we want to be aggressive about it. We want to compete with the very best school districts. Anything else on this? Karen?
I had one question about, as we move the mobile learning initiative and the coaching, is that separate than this list, or what?
That's part of the maintenance budget, so those positions would still be there. So that's why you don't see a recommendation. That was just, that's present program that we will continue.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
So the other critical piece of information to be able to make a decision tonight is what was in the budget. We saw, a couple of weeks ago, we got a flash at what kind of we saw there. I think I know the answer to this, which is, I'll tee you up. What, what do we have in, we had more than this in there, right?
Let me look up the exact number. I know it's 10.
So, I guess, the point being, you can't decide whether this works or doesn't work without the context of what this does to our budget. And I think the answer is, we saw, we saw a picture last time that long-term was something we have to work on, near-term, we're okay with. This comes in actually in line with, if not maybe a little bit better than what, what we had projected on the financial side. So as we decide where we want to go next with this, that's, I think, an important, important piece of information to add.
The PMA projections had 10.07, and this is 6.5.
So it's in line with our projections, if not a little bit better. So, I think for folks that are concerned with what this does to our budget, it's, it has been budgeted.
So we would adjust the projections that will be coming at the next meeting.
So, with that said, are we prepared to tell the administration to move forward with this plan? I see some nods.
Yes.
Yes, 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 all right. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. No, the next item, I'm turning it over to Jim. Some really good news for the taxpayers, thanks to this Board of Education being aggressive on our bond issues, and I'm going to turn that over to Jim to explain the result.
Yeah, we have that. Okay. Chris, Chris, do you want to, do you want to lead off on this? Explain the process that we're in the middle of, explain how we are restructuring the debt of the district and refinancing it as those opportunities come along, and, and I can talk a little bit, in a little bit more detail about this specific bond issue that we, that we did on January 7th.
Sure, I'll squint, my computer just shut down. At, at a high level, we, we, we're just, to recap, we started, we started a program in 2012, given where interest rates were, of prudently refinancing our debt as it became refinanceable. Keep in mind that this is advanced refundings for most of this stuff, where you have to take the proceeds, you put them in an escrow account to pay off the bonds at the call date. So there's negative arbitrage, what they call it, we've been, kind of been through this. And so the earlier you do it, the more of your savings that you, you use for that. So we've been, rather than try to do it all upfront and suffer all of that, we've decided to, we're not geniuses at calling interest rates, and we've decided to do this a step at a time. And we started in May of 2012, and we did a refinancing in January of 13, October 14th, and, or 14, and now January of 15. And I, I think, the realized savings to date for the taxpayers have been $9 million of, of, of actual savings, and then if you take into account the present value of that, which includes the negative arbitrage, it's, it's $7.7 million. And that is not money that goes back into our budget, that is money that goes back to the taxpayer in a reduction of the bond interest line in their tax bill. Now, the way we did it is, and just to reiterate that, you know, we had consciously decided to save the overall interest costs over the term of our debt by repaying our debt early with the savings. So we shortened our mortgage, if you will. And so, over the long-term, the district will pay a lot less in interest expense this way, although the current debt service and your current house payment, if you will, will stay the same for a number of years into the future. We've knocked a couple of years off the end of that, is effectively what we've done through this refinancing. And now there's two more pieces that we have out there, that we have refinancings on the horizon on October of 15, and then October of 16. And those two together are about four, almost, almost $5 million of total savings projected at today's interest rate, and about, this is, these are flipped to me, four or $5 million of savings, let's, let's go with that. And, you know, knock on wood, interest rates will stay low within this range. I think that there's, the window is, what was it, Jim, 30, 40, 50 basis points? Maybe it was more than that, that we, that we can survive and still have savings within these last two legs.
Yes, more, more than, about 50 basis points.
So half a percent. And, you know, fortunately today, I think there was rumors running around that everybody's starting to stretch out their forecast of when rates are going to rise. So we need to hang in there for a little bit longer for these remaining two tranches to get refinanced. But, overall, it will result in approximately, I think we said this the last meeting, too, approximately $14 million worth of savings to the taxpayer over the life of these bond issues. So we just wanted to make sure that we highlighted that. And Jim, if you want to talk a little bit about this deal?
Yeah. So on January 7th, and, and if you recall, we passed a parameters resolution in December. The original plan was to pass that parameters resolution at this meeting. But we were advised by William Blair that in January and June of every year, there is a lot of municipal issues that come due, there's a lot of cash to be put back to work by the institutional investors that, that invest in this type of vehicle. And with the finance committee decided that we would be well-advised to be able to be prepared to bring that bond issue as soon as possible in January, and, and basically kind of wait for a great opportunity in the market. So, so we did pass that parameters resolution in December. We were ready to go on January 6th of this year. As it turned out, the first week of January, there were very few competing bond issues in the market. William Blair went out and marketed our issue on Tuesday, found quite a bit of competing interest for our very high AA credit, AA plus credit rating, was able to customize the coupons for the, for the different institutions' needs, and was able to have those institutions compete against one another for our bonds. And from the initial estimate on Tuesday, to, to the actual pricing on Wednesday, we were able to save our taxpayers an additional $400,000 overnight. So, that, and, and that was to refinance what, what you see here, the present, the actual savings of $6.77 million that we completed on January 7th. And like Chris says, that brings our refinancings to date for a total taxpayer savings of $9.2 million over the life of the bonds. And so we had a successful financing. The next, the next opportunity where the window opens for us is in October of this year. And we'll stand ready to, to refinance that issue when it, when it is open for refinancing. So, thanks very much to the board, thanks to William Blair, thanks to a very low interest rate environment, we were able to save our taxpayers quite a bit of money. Next is board committee reports. The only committee to have met since our last meeting is the Board Improvement Committee. We want to run through what we discussed there. Yeah, so, we have been discussing engaging the community on ways to improve education in Elmhurst, and different initiatives. We do not, because we have a very lean staff in this school district, and because the Board of Education are all volunteers, we've, we've decided we need, we need help to do that. There are firms that do this for a living. We sent out an RFP, which got four qualified responses. And in our Board Improvement Committee, we went through the responses to that RFP, and rated those different companies by our evaluation of their response to the, to the RFP. We rated Unicom ARC the highest with 32 total points, George K. Baumann Company, second with 26 points, Jaskula Terman, I apologize if I'm not pronouncing that correctly, with 20 points, and then Wesleyan Association with 12 points. So, Unicom ARC was the clear winner of that evaluation. Let me ask, Malia, do you, do you want to add anything to that, or?
I would just add that we did put this out to about five different firms directly, firms that were recommended to me by fellow PR, school PR people. We also posted this on the website, and we were lucky enough to have that posting picked up in local government news, so it really did get some wider exposure than I really thought we were going to, so I was happy about that. So, as you said, we, we used a rubric which was developed from, I developed from the RFQ, so that it was fair, in my mind, that, you know, these were the things we asked for in the first place via the RFQ, and these were the things on which the company's proposals were judged. So, I think with the help of the Board Improvement Committee, it became pretty clear. We looked at a number of, of different items, from cost to physical availability, to previous experience, awards won, you know, was this something that the company pretty much was their sole practice, or did they involve themselves in other activities, that kind of thing? So, I think it was pretty clear, once we got through the rubric, you know, where everyone stood. So I thank the committee for their help in doing that.
Any, Shannon, go ahead.
One of the things that we liked about Unicom, too, was their focus group interviews. Some of the companies were charging really expensive rates just to put together some focus group interviews, where Unicom, part of their process is four focus group interviews, and then if you're going to do additional interviews, which we think we're going to have to do, four is most likely not enough, and that would be $250 for extra groups. So you, they're very flexible, if you need to do another group, it's, you know, cost-effective to do that.
Yeah, the standard cost in the industry is about $2,000 per focus group, so that was a huge difference between some of the other companies and Unicom. You're right.
We are looking to reach out to as much of our community as we can possibly address, so I can imagine doing a lot more than four focus group interviews. We really want to hear from our community, community about what their priorities are for education in Elmhurst.
And just to be clear, the purpose of the focus group interviews is to just get those initial topics on the table, and then that would help us form whatever it is that we're going to take out to the community, that then becomes the centerpiece for the community engagement. So, the focus groups are not just the entirety of the community engagement, that's just the first step.
Anything else on this topic? Go ahead.
And thank you for giving us the background on, on the procurement process. And so if I can just kind of recap, it sounds like it, it was formally pushed to five vendors, and it was also on the website, so there was certainly open access to anyone that was looking. And these, we got four that responded, and it was our, there was a, a rubric that was developed based off the RF, RFP, RFQ, and from that rubric, it was weighted out, and this Unicom came out to be, had the highest point schedule.
They, in, in our opinion, they were able to do what we want a community engagement firm to help us do, and they, they were able to do it. Their prices are extremely cost-effective. We were very impressed with the scope of their capabilities, their experience, and their pricing.
And I, I think those were, I mean, that's, you know, this is, this community engagement, this is a very, to me, this is a very important initiative. And I think the couple of things that were mentioned here was, one, being very flexible on the cost and having a good price, and then, two, their experience, and they're, they were very strong on their references, if that, if I remember that correct.
They are out of St. Louis, but they work with a, a number of school districts in DuPage County, and in, just in the Chicagoland area, not only public school districts, but higher education, and they've been doing this for 25, 30 years, and yes, they come highly recommended.
Jim?
The committee that reviewed this was the Improvement Committee with staff, in a joint committee?
Yes.
And that occurred in the, in the board meeting, or, or in the?
In the
Committee meeting?
Yeah, in the, within the committee. The committee meeting was dedicated to that topic.
Okay, very good, okay. It sounds like a, a great idea for this type of services. We wouldn't normally have board members participating and evaluating bids, but when it's this essential to the board function, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Anything else? Because the next item on our agenda is the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, of which there is one item on it, and it is the approval of this contract. I do.
I move that the Board of Education approve using Unicom ARC in response to RFQ 15-03, Public Engagement, Education, and Community in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
I'll second.
Move by Emily, seconded by John. Mrs. Walsh?
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, that's seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. We do not have anything out of closed session this evening. Okay, then that brings us to board communications. Anything? Go ahead, Karen.
I just wanted to update the board and announce, the PTA Council is hosting a legislative forum on Monday, February 23rd, from 7:00 to 9:00 at Bryan, Bryan Middle School. So they're working with us in the administration, as well as us as the board, with the League of Women Voters, and Peg Agnos, who is our DuPage County Legislative Education Network Executive Director, and we have two state reps and two senators that are committed to participating. So it'll be a panel forum, and it's a working title, working flyer yet, but the cost of free public education under the new reality. So really educating our community, and, and, and responding to the PTA Council's request for us to participate and, and bring our legislators in. It's just a, a little bit of an extension to what we've been doing as a board, reaching out to our legislators as we are community engagement, and they wanted to bring this more of a comprehensive forum, so we are supporting them.
On the 23rd?
Yes.
Now, on the 23rd, is that correct?
Monday, February 23rd, 7:00 to 9:00, Bryan Middle School.
Now, we Now, we, the idea had been bantered around a little bit, and what is the board's feelings about this? That we invite those legislators to have dinner with the board beforehand, we'll find some fine carryout to bring into the Bryan cafeteria. Is that something the board to be interested in? And invite those legislators, that are going to be there anyway, to spend a little time with us and hear our perspective on things, as well as for us to hear their perspective? Is that?
Yeah.
Right, well, we'll figure out the menu later, but, I mean, is the concept something we want to do?
Yes.
I have a yes over here, that end? Yes? Okay, all right. Karen, can I ask you to spearhead those invitations? See who wants to have dinner with us from, that represents us? Thank you.
I'll do it in collaboration with the PTA Council.
That'd be perfect.
They are already setting this up.
That'd be perfect, yeah. That would be perfect.
Yes, down first, since it's their forum, and then...
Great, great. A review of upcoming meetings. Tuesday, January 20, the Finance and Operations Committee, meeting in this room at 6:30 PM. Tuesday, January 27, is our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Monday, February 2, the Learning and Teaching Committee will meet at 7 PM, again, in these very rooms. And on Tuesday, February 10, will be the next scheduled, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. We're at the point in our agenda where there is nothing else, but I do understand the board may want to make, may want to continue meeting on our employment of employee discussion. So, I am, before I adjourn the meeting, I'm going to need a motion, if we, if the board wants to do that.
I move that we go to closed session to deal with employment of employee, and I don't think you adjourn, I think.
Right, adjourn after, we return to open session after the closed session, which is why I don't want to adjourn without the motion that the board, I need a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, move by John, seconded by Karen. Mrs. Walsh, can you call the roll?
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, that's seven ayes, no nays, we are going to go back to closed session for the discussion of employment of employee. Coming out of that session, there will be nothing left on the agenda, so we will immediately adjourn our meeting for the evening after that closed session, continuation of closed session. Thank you.